Okay, we are officially live on LMC.
Lisa, you want me to call roll?
Well, first, we'll give, Arthur can welcome everyone. I'll give the remarks and then, and then you can call the roll.
Okay.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the 18th, November 18th, 2020, meeting of the zoning board of appeals via Zoom.
This meeting is being held in accordance with Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.1 as extended, which allows the suspension of certain portions of the open meetings law to allow remote meetings. In addition, the public hearings scheduled for tonight are being held in accordance with Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.15 as extended. Francine, have notices of the meetings and the public hearing been provided?
Yes, they have.
The instructions provided to members of the public about how to participate. It's being livestreamed on LMCTV.org and it's also being broadcast live on Channel 35, Fios and 76 Optimum. Those who have requested to participate may have already received LMC TV invitations, LMC panel or invitations, instructions on how to participate in the Zoom. In addition, if Richie waves his hand, there's an email address. I think if you, if you hover the cursor over Richie's box, you'll see the email address, which is, and those are being checked tonight, right, Rich?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
They can use that one or they can use the one that's, I think, in the notice to public one. I have that open also.
Okay, so there's two email addresses that will be checked throughout the meeting for any comments that come in throughout the meeting. And Francine, will you please call the roll?
Okay, Arthur Wexler.
Here.
Steven Marsh.
Here.
Carol Miller.
Here.
Jonathan Sacks.
Here.
Irene O'Neill.
Here.
Robin Nacinski.
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, we have a call on Mr. Chair. You can begin.
All right. Francine, all right. We're dealing with the application number one for this evening for Blossom Terrace. That's resume opening the public hearing, I guess. Is that correct?
Application number one, case number 3186, Franco Lack of it, requesting a variance to replace an old shed on the premises located at Four Blossom Terrace and known on the tax assessment map as block 403, lot 31, public hearing continue.
Whoever's presenting for, for Blossom Terrace, can you raise your hand? So I don't have, I don't see your name here. Is anybody in the attendance for, for Blossom Terrace? You would have to either send a chat or you can raise your hand.
While we're waiting, could someone remind us when the public hearing was last convened on this?
From my record, it looks like it's May. May 2020, maybe?
Do you mean the notice of disapproval or the, what meeting did it first appear at?
Yeah, because this, this applicant appeared before the board.
Right, last month, I think.
No, last month, there was no sign.
Two months ago, then, September was recent.
Well, we'll check to confirm.
No one's there from to present?
I'm just trying to call them right now to see if someone will answer. They're logging in right now.
Lisa August.
Are you on the tree?
Waiting for the first case.
What?
Waiting for the first case.
Is, is one of, I'm interested in the first case? No? Okay.
Promoted them, so they should be here.
Night camera.
Frank or Jeannie, are you?
We're here.
Okay, do you have a camera on or no camera?
We do. We, I think we do.
Stuff. Come here for a sec. Honey, we're in a board meeting for the shed. We have to fix the computer for a second.
Just reminding everyone while we're waiting that just to remember, we'll need to approve or take action on the September minutes.
Can you get out of here?
You want to handle it now?
If you're ready to make a motion and second it, then sure.
I have two questions on the pages.
All right, let me pull it up.
There we go.
Have to bear with us a moment.
Sorry about that.
I've got it open.
Page five. In the middle, it said Robert Keller, the applicant architect was present. Is the present the right term?
Where, where is this?
In the middle of the page, case, application number four. It's the first, after the motion action, it says that Robert Keller, the applicant's architect, was present. Is present the proper term?
We can say presented to the board.
Okay. And on page nine.
Yeah.
The second whereas third line down at the rear yard setback will be 15, then, then parentheses 12, close. I mean, what does that mean?
I, I think, I was looking for guidance on that. Which, which one is?
You guys basically gave the option. He was, doesn't go like, he had 15, but to move it away from the house so he gets, so it wouldn't be crowding the house and be a problem, was the board preferred that he moved it somewhere between 15 and 12 feet.
All right, that's what I'll say. Will be between 15 and 12 feet?
I mean, even after the the resolution was approved.
Correct, so he couldn't be any closer than that.
Or maybe that should be clarified a bit.
So this are you, Arthur, are you comfortable with the setback being a distance of between 12 and 15 feet from?
Yes.
You can actually leave it at 12 feet because if he comes in less, which I think he may have, I have to go look at the original, the last, latest site plan. If it says 12 feet, if he comes in less, then he's still within the
That's true. Yeah, so which, why don't we just say 12 feet then?
Right, 12 feet is in keeping with then your the resolutions, right? It says the pool shall be no closer than 12 feet to the rear property line. Right. I was taking that upper interpretation, whereas it's really just a clarification of the notice of disapproval. But that the the six or the eight.
Oh, yeah, Steve, you're right. So the reason I had is I was tracking the notice of disapproval in the recital.
Right.
And the notice of disapproval, I don't have it in front of me. What does that say, Steve? Is it 12 or 15?
The original notice of disapproval probably, I don't, I'm not looking, said 15. So then the revised might say 12, and then in keeping with that, you have your eight terms of the approval that needs to meet. And there it says the pool can be no closer than 12 feet.
All right.
Rear property line and no closer than seven or 8.7 to the house. And that math would, and then with the size of the pool, it will be even larger one way or the other.
So the conditions are, are the important part. So as long as we've gotten the conditions correct, the recital, Arthur, that, that you pointed to, as, as Steve corrected, is just tracking the language of the notice of violation. So notice of disapproval. So I'm going to put that back to 15 feet because that's so we're going to remove the parenthetical 12 and put it back to 15.
Yes. So make a motion, then accept the minutes?
Second.
You have the vote on this?
Yes.
On favor?
Aye.
Need to call, need to call the roll on that?
Well, yeah, Francine, would you call the roll, please? Or call each person to state their vote?
Dave Marsh.
Aye.
Irene O'Neill.
Aye.
Carol, Carol Miller.
I wasn't there, I don't think.
Okay, Carol. Jonathan Sacks.
Aye.
Arthur Wexler.
Yes.
Robin Nacinski.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Carol, I'll just mark you as abstained. Okay, thank you, everyone.
And you're on.
All right, we're ready for you now.
Aye.
Hi, how are you?
Can you refresh our memory of your case? What you're asking for?
We're asking for, I guess, the side or front variance for our shed that we replaced with the new shed, replacing the old shed. I believe there was a issue, I guess, with the front yard variance, that there was a violation placed on, on, on the shed. So I guess we just conducted a survey and we added that additional information from getting an upgraded survey for the revised meeting that we have now.
If I understand this correctly, Richard, the shed is in a required front yard. Now, is that correct?
Correct.
And it's five feet from the front property line. That's the, on Blossom Terrace. Is that correct from the new survey from Richard Spinelli?
Correct.
And it also is 4.5 feet.
4.5.
Five or six?
4.6.
4.0, well, it's tiny, but 4.6 feet from the rear with, where five is required, correct?
Correct, correct.
So the front yard setback would have, would have to have been 30 feet to satisfy the ordinance?
I guess, I guess I'm not sure. I mean, I guess that's the
So previously that the shed that was there, previous, I mean, the shed that was there previously was also in non-conforming location.
I mean, it was, we replaced it in an existing place.
But that, but the original one was not needed variances.
I'm not sure. I mean, we, when we purchased the home, the shed was there, so I'm not, we're not sure if it was a one, was anything filed for it or not.
What I'm trying to say is that even this, these shed that you have previously, which was smaller in footprint, was in the front yard.
Right.
Blossom.
Correct.
Where it's where it has to be back 30 feet from blossom.
Right.
Correct.
So looking, when I was over there, it's really quite dominant from your neighbor's point of view, really dominant. There's no, there's no, there's nothing that's softening the view. You have, I would assume, to, there's a fence there that's, that's 1.9 feet into your property from the property line. Do you propose to do any plantings there that would make it so that shows and see a much taller?
We sent it over.
I believe we sent it over. We were planting of, planting, I, I guess, fast growing bushes.
Do you have it? We emailed it.
We have an image. I can put it up if you, I don't know how much you can see with it.
And how tall are those that you're proposing?
They would grow pretty much up to 20, 25 feet in, in height, and they're pretty fast growing.
I think he was asking those, how tall are the ones that you're proposing to put in to start?
They'll probably start off with probably with five or six feet just above the property fence and the usual.
Like two to three feet annually, so.
And they keep their bottom foliage?
They do. It would pretty much match what's really on the, on the, on the side, which, which, I guess, is the front of the house as well, so.
You know the type of tree that is?
You have it in the email.
The green giants or arborvitae's?
Not quite sure. I'm looking at the email.
It looked like to be the emerald green arborvitae, if, if you're matching what's on Blossom Terrace.
Yes.
Yeah, well, they, they grow at about a foot a year in the proper conditions, not two feet. So if you're starting at five feet with a six-foot fence there, it's going to be several years before you've been covering some of the shed. I mean, if I would remind the board, one of our concerns for the original meeting was that although this was a replacement of the shed from the original pictures we received to the one that was replaced, this was a substantially larger shed than the original one. Especially in height. So it clearly is more obtrusive to the neighbors.
I think she demonstrated that in the
Yep.
in her res-
In her pictures.
Response to it, to board.
And, and just excuse my ignorance again. Why is an accessory structure from the rear property line not allowed at five feet?
Because it occupies the front yard.
Yeah, it's not, it's got to be within the, the rear one-third of the rear yard.
Because, oh, you're saying that triggered that, the normal setback?
Well, I mean, they're, they're obviously the five, they're 4.6, so the, yeah, they would be, they'd have to move a point four of an inch to get it to that five foot.
And, and move it 30 feet away from Blossom Terrace.
That's what I was trying to get at, Arthur, like why, if they moved it five feet, was it not just one variance?
Because it's not in the rear one-third of the property when the front yard takes precedent.
Yeah, I remember, I remember now.
How much space is there between the fence and the asphalt, the neighbor's asphalt, where these trees would be planted?
Roughly about two, I believe, maybe two feet, maybe a little bit more than that.
Tell me, got a garden on who's happy that's what happened. That's not a lot, that's not a lot of space for a six or eight foot tree. I'm just concerned with, you know, survivability, I guess, in that environment.
And I'm not sure. I mean, we, we, we had the landscaping company come out and they said that they, that they would be able to do just well. Especially that there's a lot of sunlight there for it, for them to grow.
Yeah, they said it wouldn't be long.
Would it intrude upon the driveway of the neighbor? Because I'm looking at the old picture that the neighbor has sent us of the original, what it looked like originally with all that foliage there and I can see the leaves were kind of going into the driveway area of your neighbor.
The old stuff that we had there before, when we bought the house, right? The original?
Yes, so, well, going on Irene's question, if you put those trees there and they grow, is it going to grow onto the neighbor's driveway area?
Well, she said that she likes those, so that's why we particularly picked those. And we can trim them too, I guess.
Well, the reality is she can trim them also if they're violating the property and the obligation under whatever we do, if we were to grant the variance, would be that they need maintained. So you're, the, the owner would be taking the risk that they can thrive.
What kind of fence is there presently between you and your neighbor?
With cedar, wood, double-sided, double, double-sided fence, wood fence?
And how far apart?
Excuse me, how far apart from what?
The post.
Um, I believe it's eight feet.
Because she's in, her driveway is sort of over your property line on that corner.
Right.
Right.
And your fence sits 1.9 feet away from your property line.
Right.
And the shed is 4.6 feet from your property line. It might be beneficial to move your fence a bit to your property line.
Right, we could do that too.
And this way it'll give you the, the tree, the plantings a lot more space to expand.
We can do that. That's, that shouldn't be a problem.
You're suggesting to put the trees on their side of the fence?
No, 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 there is a fence that presently exists on the applicant's property, which is 1.9 feet from the property line.
Yes.
On the survey.
I get that, but you're suggesting moving that fence closer
To the property line.
Then they would be putting the arborvitae's that they were suggesting they would be putting in between the property line and the fence.
Correct.
Their side of the fence.
That's correct.
Okay, that might make it more difficult for them to thrive when they're completely landlocked inside.
And I, yeah, the neighbor.
And for the, I mean, I'd like to hear from the neighbor, but I think putting the arborvitae's on the neighbor's side will help to soften the fence.
Yes.
But their neighbor's side is all asphalt.
There's about two feet of, of, of dirt as well, I believe.
According to the survey, there isn't.
No, there's only 1.9 feet and some of it is taken up by asphalt.
Right.
So if anything, the suggestion might be that the fence moved closer to the shed to give more room for the arborvitae's to thrive on the neighbor's side, so you have a proper planting area.
So we can, we can do it, either or, I mean, whichever, I would think that the plants being on her side, I mean, it would be more aesthetically pleasing for her versus for us. I mean, that was the original suggestion that we wanted to do to begin with.
Right, and you both deal with softening the fence as well as covering the
And we don't have an objection to plant if she likes a different type of a bush. I mean, we, I mean, we're open to that. I mean, we can work with, with her and she can select whatever she all like to be more aesthetically pleasing for her, because for us, it's not going to be visible, so.
So is your intention to relocate the complete fence? Or how much of the fence to your shed?
Probably just
Just a section, yeah, behind, I guess.
You're creating a little, little rectangular shape.
Right.
I'm only suggesting not that we condition this, but that I'm just making a suggestion to the homeowner, which they can work out with their arborist to say, what is the best way to make sure that this would thrive in that spot, so they're not having to replace it? Because we will condition as they must remain in perpetuity. I don't have a real feeling as to whether or not, I, I wouldn't take a position that they should need to move the fence.
Well, my concern was just that there, my concern was that there is enough room over there so that the, whatever they plant doesn't fall onto the neighbors. You know, there's going to be leaves coming out of that tree that, I guess you're saying that they could cut the leaves off, but if the leaves are completely on the driveway, they're going to have to like shave the whole thing down to the trunk. Is there actually enough room for those trees to be there without, I mean, I look in this picture and I think I've seen the neighbor's cars is right there. I mean, that's really her driveway.
There's a lot of stuff the neighbor has there.
Yes, are these, are these trees going to be these big evergreens that are going to go on to the neighbor's driveway? That was my question.
From my understanding, they don't grow that wide. They grow taller, but they don't grow that wide. So, I mean, we can definitely maintain them or, I mean, if she prefers to, she can shave them whichever way. I mean, we'll definitely make sure that, that it's being maintained.
An arborvitae will grow in whatever direction you allow it to grow, but it can be maintained in a relatively narrow strip.
Okay.
Pretty, they're pretty dense, so they provide good coverage from our understanding, so.
But again, I'm not taking a position on that. I'm just suggesting that since it's the homeowner's obligation to make sure they maintain the screening properly, and if they have to be trimmed down to such an extent that they don't thrive, he's going to then ultimately, I guess, need to move the fence. So you either can choose to be preemptive now and do this one time and move the fence, or take the risk that you're not going to be able to have the proper screening. But I think our position would just be that it be screened completely and in such a way that the height will address this in a relatively short period of time to screen, not just the fence, but to screen the shed.
Fair enough.
But first off, the, the fence is in the front yard. So what's the height of the fence in the front yard, Richard?
Four feet.
So it's a four-foot fence.
But we're not considering this a what the, what the fence is screening, that portion of the yard, you're not considering that a front yard.
No, but the area that's in the front yard is the front yard. That's a 30-foot front yard along Blossom Terrace.
That fence is a different fence, right?
Excuse me?
Yes.
That's front yard, you find in the code as you draw a line with the face of the house facing the lot line that's in the front yard.
Blossom Terrace.
In front of that is considered a front yard.
But to the applicant, the fence that is facing Blossom Terrace, is that the cedar fence? Or is that the existing PVC white fence?
It's the existing PVC white fence.
Right.
Which is on Blossom Terrace?
Yes.
Right, well, there's two ways of blossom, right.
Well,
PVC.
The one that's separating, I'm talking about the fence that separates your property and your neighbor's property.
That's the cedar fence. That's the cedar fence.
That's not the front yard, that's the rear yard.
But part of it is in the front yard in this instance. The corner lot.
Well.
Right.
Help me understand, if that's the case, then it's not a five-foot setback that we're supposed to be.
Twenty-five.
Thirty-foot setback.
Forty and twenty-five.
Excuse me?
It's a, it's a rear lot line, but a front yard, and then it's a front lot line in a front yard.
Right, so which 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 governs in this case? The front yard, which is parallel to the front street. Base of the, of the property. You say, if you were laying your house out here, you would set back at thirty feet on both sides, it's a corner lot. And all of that is front yard. Excuse me?
No, it's just talking to my lifeline, sorry.
So by allowing this, we're allowing a shed in the front yard, even though it appears to be in the rear yard. Because it's on two streets.
That's correct, and we're not really talking about the blossom side because it is already well-screened.
Right. So if that's well-screened and a five-foot passage. Well, it also has a, then as it goes around towards the property line that that separates this property from the neighbor. There's four point six feet there. So if the, it it should just as well thrive there. If the fence was on the property line or the fence was brought back to the face of the shed.
This is what it, this is what it looks like if you look at my screen, that's.
That's the front of the house.
That is the second front yard, the side that's on blossom. The neighbor who we are talking about that sees the shed is the one that we're directly looking at here. So that's the rear, you, where you walk around here. To see what we're talking about on the rear yard.
They're both blossom terrace because it's.
Well, this is the, this is actually the driveway of the neighbor's house behind.
And then straight over here.
Right, this is, this is the shed. That's the house. This is already well-screened, it was the rear side that was not well-screened.
Just serving up the neighbor, that would like to speak, so if you ever, if you'd like to. You know, permit her, I can always bring her.
Should we open up to the, to the, to the, I can't say the audience, I don't know what term to use.
There's still audience.
Audience.
I'm sorry, to us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can't see you, but we, you can hear you.
So my name is Dina, and I'm at Seven Blossom, and yes, I'm the property that is on the other side of the cedar fence. The cedar fence, that cedar fence is not a four-foot fence, it's a five-foot fence. So my front yard is actually looking at their backyard. And I mean, I went through a lot of this paperwork, the application for the shed, and there were some errors in the paperwork. It said that this was an application for a ten-by-ten shed, this is actually a twelve-by-ten shed. And um replacing an eight-by-eight shed. Um, I did bring to the applicant's attention that the roof line is different also. The roof line on the old shed kind of pitched towards their own property. And now this new shed is pitched towards my property. Um, I did let them know, because I've had several conversations with them about how we can resolve this. Um, so the roof is pitched towards my driveway, I get the runoff from the rain, um, I brought that to their attention and. Um, the soil underneath the fence, I know they have some gravel under there. I get the runoff from the gravel and I get the runoff from the soil that comes down my driveway. So I know that they were trying to rectify that, and I believe they put up a gutter. Um, but it's a non-working gutter because. Both ends of the gutter are open, so you have the water that still comes out of the gutter, and there are no leaders on the gutter. Deterring the water from coming down under the fence to my my driveway. I do get the runoff from Blossom Terrace because I am the center of the circle, so that was one of my concerns. Um, this shed is just a tremendous structure. And I did ask them as they were building it if they were going to put trees planting in between the shed and me, so I didn't have to look at it. They said yes, that was in March and nothing has gone up. I went out and purchased evergreens because I thought I could put them on my side to block the fence and the shed. And there is not enough soil on my side of that fence. So although you say there's two feet of dirt there, there's not, there. And when you see the size of these trees, because I have several in my yard. The base of those trees are about four to five feet from the bottom around. There's not that much soil on my side of that fence to provide any kind of capability of holding a tree like that. And that's obviously the kind of tree I would like, so that it would wrap around Blossom Terrace from both ways, and I would get the screening. But I don't have enough property on my side of that fence to even do that myself. So I thought they had suggested moving the fence or moving. I mean, and obviously, if the shed was just not put so close to their fence, there would have been plenty of room. To put trees between their shed and their fence where it wouldn't hinder into my driveway. Because that would mean now these are their trees on my side of the fence, and they're gonna have to maintain them. And if I'm not the property owner here and someone else is, you're now coming over into my property to maintain trees that you planted. That honestly, you could have planted somewhere else for the same purpose.
Can I just, can I just interject for a second? I I think you're not recognizing that their fence is actually set back into their property.
Yeah.
Um, actually, your asphalt driveway is violating, it's a trespass onto their property. That's there, so the area that is the dirt between your asphalt driveway is actually your neighbor's.
Yes, I know that, I know. That's why I, I mean, I was willing to put trees in their dirt on my side of that fence. But like I said, there's not enough property there. Um, the trees that were there prior to them, they were, they cut the trees down to put the fence up. Um, my driveway was here at the same time the trees were here. So those trees that I showed you pictures of were probably fifteen feet tall. So I know they were there for probably the time the houses were were built. Um, so I didn't have any problem with the plantings that were there before, and I honestly, I asked them to please save the trees. And I believe she was in favor of it and her husband was not. And they could have honestly put the fence up with the trees still there, and we wouldn't be here right now.
Did, did you see what they proposed, the drawing?
I just saw it on the screen, yes. And there is not enough property on this side.
Let's, let's not, let's not get there, because I've raised that issue with the homeowner already.
Okay.
If they can do something that looks like what they were showing you. Successfully, where they were gonna maintain it, would you be happy with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so like I said, this board would just condition. They must maintain the trees to block the fence and to block the a- accessory structure. And they must maintain them in perpetuity. Now, if they find out, because their arborist, I'm sure, is gonna come over and have the same uh conclusion that you reached, which is. I can't plant them there, you're gonna have to move the fence, then they're gonna have to move the fence. So. From the standpoint of this board, though, we're just trying to accomplish softening what's there. Just a- as a consideration in whether or not we'll approve the variance for the position of that structure.
Jonathan, why don't we take the position to be a little more proactive and tell, and condition that the fence has to be removed?
I, I would not object to, I don't.
And give, give the plantings enough space around it to grow, thrive, and be. Become the screening of the shed from the neighbor's property.
I I defer to the chair.
Because you can turn your, your. Your, the fence around to, to, to actually come into your shed and that the shed become part of the fence. And then you would have almost five to six feet of soil on the other side to plant in.
And I think you muted.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
Are you following what I'm saying?
Yes.
It would make sense at this point, if you're gonna put the, the, the trees in, at least you'll have a bit of soil to. To, to thrive there.
Absolutely, I mean, we're, we're.
And you have a wall there ready to act as a fence, so you might as well join the fence, not all the way along your property, make a. Break it so it turns back to your shed.
That's fine, we can put it closer to the shed and just.
No, need a fence behind your shed and.
Right, right.
Shed is the fence.
Right, good.
Can we move on?
Yes.
Do we wanna sketch that up or and?
I can do it right here.
Admit it.
And I'll put it up to the uh thing if it that. If you can see it.
Do we have a minimum size that those trees should go in as? Because obviously, you can plant small enough trees, they'll fit anywhere, but a six to seven or a seven-foot arboride.
If the board. And a type. This way you know. We do our inspection.
A pen doesn't work, hold on a minute.
If the fence is five feet tall. Isn't that um in violation of zoning?
It sounds like they're gonna be removing that fence from behind there anyway. That almost, that pretty much lines up with the front yard.
Right, but the.
When they deadhead it into the shed.
So the rest of the area of the fence is not five feet?
The rest of the area of the fence would be five feet, but it's in the rear yard, so it's, it's permitted.
Wherever that is, can you see this?
Yes.
And I'll allow you to at this, I think I my finger over it, here. The plant, in other words, I don't know where your posts are. But at some point past the shed, you can rotate that panel. Put your arboride in that area and then you continue, are you gonna continue along the back inside of the fence?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, it, that, that, that's perfectly fine, which you.
Yeah, so it'll happen to look like it's just continuing straight across.
See, we have anyone else from the public?
So make, um, should I make a motion to close the public hearing?
You don't have anyone else, Richie, right?
To the neighbor, Nina, does that sound like that, that's inadequate?
Can I, can I just get clarification, so does that mean the fence will not be separating the shed and my property?
That's correct.
It'll be trees now and not a fence.
That's correct.
Okay, so that, it'll be trees from that corner. To how far down the property line?
Well, at this point, I don't, that you have to take up with the applicant, but right now, we're trying to soften the. Your property.
Okay.
I assume he's gonna move, I. Ben, you're gonna plant more trees along your backyard, back lot, lot line?
Correct, I mean, to, to cover the shed, we can extend it slightly, but.
Yeah, whatever, you know, you have a view also from your uh. From your house I'd be concerned about.
Well, I mean, we have her view, yes.
It will at least be behind the shed and a little further, if not more.
I mean, eventually, we'll probably plant something, but.
It looks like it has to be minimally between what's currently the third and the fourth post, but perhaps all the way to the fourth post.
And it's, it's a ten-foot tall shed, so it's.
At, at, at the ridge, yes?
Twelve, it's twelve across and ten high, so does that mean the trees are, are going to go to the height of the shed? I'm just curious, so I'm prepared before.
Oh, I mean, I, I don't think we're gonna get ten-foot trees now, but.
But I think they'll grow and, and the shape of your, your shed, is you get the low, the lower, isn't the, the, the high point of the shed? The, at the ridge point?
Yes.
And that's the height, and how high is that?
The, I, I believe the, the middle point, I believe, is, is the, um. I don't know if it's eight feet or, I, I could, I can measure it up.
And the wall that faces, Dina, how high is that?
Downward, so I think it's at six feet.
So it'll block that portion of, of the fence and it'll just grow taller if they thrive.
That ridge line has to be at least ten feet above.
The ridge is ten feet, the outside walls are eight feet.
But it, it, in the center, it's higher and then it tapers off on the side.
So, uh, should there be a concern because of the roof line? Now, now you're not, now you don't have a fence there to prevent the water from coming down the roof line down my driveway. Are, are trees going to prevent that, or am I gonna?
Yeah, I mean, the gutters, you know, we, we can reposition them, but they'll go, they can go on our property, so that's.
And actually, the, that tree line should be bermed up probably, uh. Twelve, twelve inches at least or more, so that's gonna keep all the water on your property as opposed to. Spilling through to Dina's property.
And, and you can make a complaint to the building department because you can't have runoff from someone's property onto yours.
Bro, planting should help to, um.
Alleviate the runoff?
Alleviate that.
Okay.
Minimize that. That's a, so for, so you know what we're talking about, that. We're looking at, I'm looking at your, the photo you submitted, Dina, that's a five-foot cedar fence, right? With an eight-foot outside wall of the shed to a ten-foot ridge line, the highest point in the middle. And we're proposing that the. Neighbor is going to plant at a minimum six-to-seven-foot uh arborides. So they'll be a, uh, slightly higher than that fence, a foot higher, and if they prop them out of the ground a foot. That's then two feet over that fence line. Which will approach the, um, the, the kind of the white board on the edge of there. Of that roof, and then it'll grow about a, a foot a year. So.
It, it'd be blocked out.
And you're talking about putting it on, on a raised berm, you said? Which would, um, actually give the trees more, more soil, because I think what's there is so limited. Um, that if something is created for them, that would give them some height, it would be better for them to have the majority of more soil.
They have to be put in soil and it needs to be, uh, you don't want a total, you don't want it unsupported left and right. So it needs to be in a hole, but kind of bermed up around it, you can have it half. You know, if the, if the ball falls twenty inches, it could be ten inches into soil. It can be a little higher out of the ground.
Okay. I mean, I want them to be successful growing too, I don't, I hate to see something.
By removing this fence and pulling it in, uh, given, allowing, now you have, you really have a substantial amount of space to plant. Uh, the trees that I think we're talking about.
Okay.
Ben, when did you plant those trees that you see?
They were there before we purchased the home, so.
And when you, when you purchased the home?
It's gonna be about a year and a half now.
Those trees have been there probably, I've been there for eighteen years, so they were probably planted maybe fifteen years ago.
And they are much higher than this, okay.
Actually, there, there's a double planting of them, he did them on one side of the white fence, and then he planted a second row on the inside of the white fence. So you have a, a double layer of trees there.
Right. Any other questions from the audience?
I have no emails and nobody raising their hand.
Like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you.
Anyone like to second it? Can you hear me?
Second. We're all on mute, that's the problem.
Um, someone like to make a motion on the case?
Can I have a vote first? Everybody raise your hand if you're voting yes.
We have to do the motion.
Am I voting today?
No, no, voting for closing.
Oh, closing?
Francine, am I voting?
No.
Close, motion.
Okay, now the next motion.
Who would like to make a motion?
Sounded like Steve had it down.
Yeah, Stephen.
Application number, oh, am I on? I'm open, uh, application three, one, eight, six. Of Bronco Lapkia Sevic.
Yes. Very good.
Thanks, Four Blossom Terrace. To replace an old shed with a new. Hold on one second. New ten by ten shed on the premises located at Four Blossom Terrace, section four, block three, parcel thirty one. Disapproved on the following grounds, the shed in the front yard is four point six. Feet where thirty feet is permitted. The rear yard setback is five feet where twenty five feet is required. And further, the shed increases the extent by which the building is nonconformant pursuant to section. Two forty sixty nine for residents in an R two F zone district. All right, let's see here. Um, the board finds that the benefit to the applicant from the granting of the variance outweighs. Any detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community in reaching this conclusion, the board considered the following factors. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will. Be created. What Lisa, when should we discuss our? Our. Restrictions on this.
I think after you make the findings.
Yeah, go ahead and make the findings and then you can propose conditions.
Okay, well, I guess so to to that effect.
Actually, Steve, I think I I see why you asked the question.
Right, I need to.
Yeah, so you.
My considerations.
Yes, so I I think you should propose the condition first so that your recitals will make sense, so that your findings, your findings will make sense.
So that might just take a second, let's see. In it, so in in an attempt to reduce the change to the community, to the neighborhood. Um, the board suggests. Relocating the fence in the backyard and breaking it towards the shed. As per the sketch presented by the chairman, Arthur Wexler. By by moving this fence. And actually removing the fence along the shed line in the rear yard will allow for. The opportunity to plant a row of trees that will screen the shed and have enough soil to. Survive and thrive. So. So by doing this, by doing that. The board feels that an undesirable change will not be, and the character of the neighborhood will not be changed or altered, will be. Minimizing the impact of this shed to the neighbors and the community. Really screening this shed with a row of green. Arbor by day. In addition. The planting of that of that row of trees will uh, help to mitigate. Any runoff from the property between the two properties and keep it on the homeowner's side of. Property line on bloss- of Four Blossom Terrace. So. How's that for one, Lisa? That all right?
Yes, the only thing is I'm not going to reference, I can't reference Arthur's sketch because it's not in record, but but you gave me enough words that I think it works.
Let me just make one correction, Steve, I think it's a ten by twelve shed, is that correct?
Is it ten by ten or ten by twelve? Because ten by ten is on the notice of disapproval, it's ten by twelve, I was under the impression that it was twelve, I thought we were referencing twelve feet high. So Ben, what's the final dimension of this thing?
I can double check and measure it up quickly, but I believe we submitted the. The documents that that came with the shed.
I have them here, just so I'm curious.
Oh, by ten, it says on the on the document, the specifications you gave me.
Well, by ten is the dimension.
Well, by ten is the is the footprint.
By twelve feet high, okay.
Ten feet high.
Oh, ten feet high, sorry, ten feet high, twelve by ten by ten feet high. Okay, uh, whether an applicant can achieve their goals via reasonable alternative, which does not. Involve the necessity of an area variance, uh, short of relocate, this property is. Uh, burdened with a number of front yard setbacks, they're replacing existing shed that had been, that had been occupying this front yard. So. Short of putting it. Uh, on the other side of the property, which would be away from the driveway where it's uh, more functional. No, anything they do in this area is going to require a variance. Whether the variance is substantial. The uh. The variance is substantial on its own, however, given the fact that it is replacing a shed that had been there for. I guess, what's our latest date on this shed, eighteen, at least eighteen years from before? The neighbor had been there, Dina, that that should have been there the entire time.
Eighteen years plus.
Eighteen plus years. Uh, we're replacing a slightly larger shed, but mostly in the same footprint with the same. Setbacks that had. Uh, existed for eighteen plus years. Whether the variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Again, the board took that into consideration and attempted to mitigate these. Uh, the impact on the neighbor neighbors and the neighborhood by moving the fence and requesting that trees be planted and kept. Oh, kept alive and in good condition in perpetuity. And whether there has been a self-created difficulty. It is indeed, but non-determinative in this matter. Anybody want to add anything else to this one?
Yeah, I'd like to add that the shed. On the side that faces the the neighbor, the side walls are only six feet in height. Meaning that this planting of the trees will block that out almost immediately.
That you want, where do you want?
Have you seen this picture, Arthur?
But I'm looking at the uh, the the. The specifications of the unit. Something's going on there. If you don't believe the specification, so the fence is in five feet high in the back. You take your choice.
Or or I think the grade, I think the grade goes up to the driveway, that driveway slopes down from the front. I think you're looking at that raised on grade.
Uh, that's possible. Actually, there's another footprint, right? Uh, all right, for the reasons stated above, the granting of the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the town of zoning ordinance. Uh, and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. For reasons stated above, the variance is the minimum necessary to alleviate the difficulty detailed in the application. Yet also preserves and protects the character of the neighborhood and the health, self, safety and welfare of the community.
And Steve, in addition to um, your description of of where the trees would be planted and how the fence would be relocated. You want the plantings to be maintained in perpetuity. Right?
That, yes, that, and are we specifying that they'll be, you know, a six to seven foot Emerald Green Arbor by day, or is that too specific, or is that helpful?
Well, I think you should, I think we should make him seven feet and not even.
Okay, well, that you buy him seven to eight, six, they they saw, they're sold to six to sevens or seven to eights.
So if you buy seven day, you you can put one less in.
Uh, so seven to eight foot Emerald Green Arbor by days. Should be planted.
Was that four feet on center?
That's hard to say, uh, but for, that's, they'll be touching at four feet.
Can you repeat that?
They'll be touching at four feet on center. Yeah.
So the condition is that. Emerald Green Arbor by days at a height of seven to eight feet. Um, maintained in perpetuity?
Sure, and that, I mean, that is by, obviously, I'm not an arborist, but. Uh, if they want to have a arborist provide, uh, you know, a. Alternative. Uh, that's, that would match, our goal is to really have a a wall of green screen that that. That shed, it's been my experience that that would work, so.
About green harbor, right, green harbor vitae or similar?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I got it. Second?
Oh, second.
Who is that, Arthur?
Yes. I think whoever, yes.
That's fine.
Robin?
Yes?
Donovan?
Yes.
Are we finished?
Application number two, case number three, one, nine, two, Casey Rosenbloom. Requesting an interpretation of the zoning code on the premises located at forty two Villa Road and known on the tax assessment map. As block one, 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 lot one, six, three.
Make motion on the public hearing?
And excuse me, wait, um, was this duly noticed?
I don't know, what? It was not duly noticed, there were no signs. So we will hear the case, but can't make a determination, is that correct?
Thank you for everybody and I'll then if we're all done, then we'll be leaving, I appreciate everybody's time, thank you so much.
Good night.
How do you want me to proceed with that, Lisa?
So even though the public hearing can't be officially opened, you can hear what the applicant has to say, if there is anyone that signed up to participate, your discretion, you can. Hear comments, but um, there will still be, there will still have to be a public hearing opened next month.
Okay, um, I have two comments to make before we begin. Now this, the time, okay, uh, well, first of all, I I have a procedural question that I I wanted to ask about this case, which is the. They're asking for an interpretation that the zoning code is erroneous. Assuming for the sake of argument, that this board says that the zoning cor- code is not erroneous. Does uh, the zoning board, will the zoning board then consider whether they would be entitled to a variance or an exception, or I'm not sure how to term it? From that decision? So in other words, if there's a violation of the zoning code, if we find that.
I think we have to allow the applicant to present with clarity what relief they're seeking.
Okay, uh, that's my first question, but my second comment is that. The um, one of the parents involved in this case is the, or I should say, one of the children involved. Is the grandchild of a friend of mine, so therefore I think I have to recuse myself. Uh, from this matter.
Okay.
Is that true? I mean, not the fact that that you. One of your friends' grandchildren, will that affect you? Do you feel that that will affect you making determination here? That's pretty far removed in my mind.
So in my view, it, that would not require Robin to recuse herself, but if she's saying that that relationship would interfere with her ability to be objective, then she should recuse herself.
And you feel that so, Ro, Robin?
I feel that I cannot say with certainty. That I would be uninfluenced, so I am recusing myself.
Okay, so you can turn, you can still listen to the meeting, but um, if you would please just turn your video off. And then Carol, you would step into Robin's shoes for this application.
Welcome.
Glad I was here.
Excuse me, my wife's uneducated, she'd like to hear this, I have to go in the other room and tell her we're on, excuse me, one moment.
Mr. Weingartner, is there anybody else that should be promoted to panelists?
My my partner Diana Bunnin Kolov, I believe, is on, and I'd also. I'd also like for Casey Rosenbloom, our client, to be on.
Okay, I did promote both of them, they must have their.
Thank you very much.
You're on, oh, you're, whoa.
We're ready, okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Weingarten, I'm a partner in the law firm of Del Bello, Dan Ellen, Weingarten, Wise and Whittaker. And I appear tonight representing Casey Rosenbloom and Jared Weisfeld, the owners of forty two Villa Road. Our clients are with us, I believe, and you would would like to also have an opportunity to speak, Ms. Rosenbloom. After my presentation, if that's possible, I'd also like to apologize for the board, the deficiency on the signage, and that will be corrected for your next meeting. Uh, these are unprecedented times that we are living in, the pandemic has changed how we live, how we work, how we go to school. It has affected nearly every aspect of our lives. While we all hope and pray that this will come to an end soon, many of us are spending virtually all of our time at home, conducting business at home, caring for family members at home. Remote education, while not optimal, has become part and parcel of home occupancy throughout our nation and soon may be mandatory. Why? Because we are social distancing, we are concerned about our own safety, and most importantly, we want to keep our children, our loved ones and our neighbors safe. At issue is a small group of parents faced with this pandemic who have chosen to form a learning pod and have their children meet on school days for the purpose of learning remotely together. Rather than individually in their own homes, to keep their children healthy both physically and mentally. Contrary to the September twenty third, twenty twenty violation issued by your code enforcement official. Which cited the learning pod as an unauthorized accessory use in a one-family residence district. The learning pod is simply a typical incidental use of a home, which is similar to a regularly scheduled study group. Garage band practice, tutoring, piano lessons, Cub Scout meetings, or other small gatherings. None of which, by the way, are listed as accessory uses in your zoning code, but they are nevertheless permitted. We have brought this appeal pursuant to Town Law Section two sixty seven B and Town Zoning Ordinance Section two forty eighty nine D one. To appeal the determination of the town code enforcement officer that the learning pod is an unauthorized accessory use. Not only is the learning pod a permitted incidental use, emergency uses of a home have also long been permitted. If we are threatened by a weather emergency, or even the threat of an attack. We all know that standard procedure is to gather your family and necessary supplies and shelter in place in the safest location in your home. In the case of those who are fortunate enough to have a basement, that is where the government encourages you to shelter in place. This does not have a caveat for those with unfinished basements, which are not permitted by zoning to have overnight occupants. This is an obvious exception to those rules in case of emergency. I can assure you that if your neighbors did not have a basement, you would be applauded, not issued a notice of violation for inviting them to your basement until the emergency subsided. That is the situation here, a group of parents have created a gathering to protect their children's welfare during a declared state of emergency. The violation notice does not even give a name or even characterize the use, so it is difficult to understand exactly what has been found to be unauthorized. As set forth in the detail of our submission, this use is not a private school or a daycare operation. As you can imagine, there are many pods operating throughout Westchester, including Mamaronek. In fact, with schools shutting down in-person instruction due to rise in cases in New York City today, with over a hundred sixty kids in quarantine nearby Miraschel, these arrangements will be going on in homes throughout your community and our entire region and nation. We have not seen any reports of such pods being violation of zoning ordinances. Evidently, the building inspectors around the county have interpreted their code to include remote learning uses as incidental to the use of a single-family home, keeping in mind the unique safety concerns and social distancing guidelines of the pandemic. While the town defends itself by stating it is only doing this because it received an anonymous complaint from one neighbor, a person who did not even identify themselves or approach their neighbors to see if there might be some accommodation which could be made if there was some particular reason that the neighbor was upset by the arrangement. This should not be enough to make these parents make choices which could endanger their children. Even the New York State Office of Children and Family Services has recognized these remote learning pods as a home-based use or program that does not require licensing. Typically, they would need licensing, but the temporary nature of the use during the declared emergency is a matter of common sense, suspends the requirement. As Casey Rosenbloom will explain, she and her husband chose the remote option for their child, who was enrolled in Murray Avenue Elementary School, because they have vulnerable family members, including a young daughter with asthma and older parents. They did not feel comfortable with the in-person school option. In addition, the remote option is great for, may be great for safety, but it is not a perfect, from a mental health perspective. Children long to be with their friends in a stable environment. As we saw this spring, it is unsustainable for young children to be isolated for long periods of time without some interaction with their peers and guidance from supervising adults. This is where the learning pod came in, to fill that void. Finally, this learning pod also allows parents who are required to leave their homes for work to have a safe option for their children. These children meet during school hours, remain enrolled in their respective elementary schools within the school district. They follow each elementary school's curriculum and the school district calendar. Clearly, the learning pod does not meet the definition of a school which would require it to have its own curriculum. Casey and Jared do not charge a fee to the parents of the other children in the learning pod. The parents have hired a tutor assistant to supervise the children, but there is always a parent either in the house or on the property to oversee. Is it really the town's position that the presence of the tutor creates the zoning issue and that the person's removal makes this proper? Does that make any sense? We would prefer the children to lack individual adult care and supervision? Is it the town's position that it would be okay if it was inside the house but not the garage? How does that make sense? Unless the town is aware of a safety issue in the garage, and if there is one, our clients would like to know what it is to either cure it or be the first ones to remove their children. The children meet in Casey and Jared's oversized two-car garage because it is insulated and finished space that is well-lit, has high ceilings, allows for socially-distanced spacing of the children, and has windows and doors that can be opened to allow for the ventilation recommended by COVID safety guidelines. There is no commercial purpose served by the remote learning use at the property, and the assistance provided by the tutor assistant is supervisory only. Considering the facts here, the board should conclude that the nature and character of the remote learning pod is such that it is incidental and customary to a principal use of the single-family home with minimal impact on the neighborhood. While we understand that the building department may have concerns about the safety of using the dwelling of the garage, in particular for the remote learning use, that is not a basis to allege a violation under the zoning code. We urge the town to come and visit, to take a site visit, and if there is anything that needs to be changed in that garage, we will take the action that is necessary. In any event, when weighed against the danger of COVID exposure, which is increasing again every day, the safest choice for many of your residents of this town is to allow a small group of children to meet and learn together in the home. At this point, if it is the board's pleasure, my client Casey Rosenbloom would like to say a few words. Thank you.
Hello, um, my name is Casey Rosenbloom, and I reside at forty-two Villa Road, where the pod that we're discussing takes place. I am a lifelong resident of Larchmont and a very proud product of the Mamaronek Public School District. Um, I'm here, supported by and speaking on behalf of the families in our pod. Um, this is my husband Jared Weisfeld, and we live here with our three children, Jude, who is seven, um, Olive, who is four, and Sully, who is two. I just wanted to take the opportunity to speak about why we decided to form this pod. Um, we decided to form the pod after Mamaronek released their plan for hybrid learning with the option of remote. Uh, our four-year-old daughter Olive has asthma. Um, it was caused by a severe case of RSV as a newborn, and it makes her perhaps more susceptible to dangerous complications if she should contract COVID as her eyes, her asthma is virally induced. Um, when Olive gets a basic cold, it can be dangerous. We've spent more nights than I like to think about, um, in the ER because of her struggling to breathe. Um, and we would rather not find out about what would happen should she meet COVID. Um, we also experienced firsthand, as did so many parents in late winter and early spring, the detrimental effect learning remotely and independently has on the mental health of a seven-year-old. Uh, so we thought, coming together with these other families who are equally conservative about their exposure to COVID was a great way of making sure that Jude was learning and socializing in the safest possible way. Um, we wanted to stay a part of the district that we so dearly love and frankly pay very high property taxes to be a part of. And so we all opted for remote. Um, we are two full-time working parents. Every child in our pod has two full-time working parents. Um, and we fully applaud the amazing job that Dr. Shapps and the district has done, but the logistics of the hybrid model can be very difficult for families with two working parents and multiple children. Um, so we have a tutor who oversees the synchronous and asynchronous learning from the Mamaronek School District. Uh, this way, we can continue to do our jobs and give attention to our other children. Um, and it's been incredibly rewarding to watch how creative and warm the environment is and to see how the kids are navigating this strange time together as a team. Jared and I have the pleasure of doing so daily, as we are both working from home and always around. And then we also have a rotating schedule of our pod parents for the last forty-five minutes of the day, so they have the pleasure of witnessing it as well. Our garage is an oversized two-car garage that, much like most of Larchmont, we've never used for cars. Um, it has very high ceilings, around twenty feet, uh, two windows in addition to the doors. So it felt like a natural place for the kids to gather. Um, they're protected from the elements, but with the doors and windows open benefit from the air circulation, which at this point, we know is the most important thing when trying to quell the spread of this virus. Um, as you can see in the pictures we've provided, we have outfitted the space to be a wonderful place for the kids to gather and learn. It is a safe space. I would never put any child, and certainly not my own, in any situation, physically or emotionally, that is not safe. Um, and as we see closure after closure here in Mamaronek and the surrounding school districts, as we see COVID cases spiking, a million cases per week, I can say with quite a bit of confidence that this is the safest option available. I think it goes without saying that COVID is a deadly illness. Um, as I read this, we are at a death toll of two hundred and fifty thousand people in our country. I'm not quite sure how limiting exposure to this virus can be considered less safe than any alternative. Um, there are pods operating all over Mamaronek and Larchmont and the surrounding towns, and yet we're the only ones appearing here. Uh, someone has also begun to file additional anonymous complaints about other things relating to our home, like our swing set, making us think that there is just one generally disgruntled person. Um, we believe that while there is one person who is unhappy about what we're doing, uh, there's a much larger, larger neighborhood that is very supportive, as you can see from the letters we've submitted. Um, I don't know why that would be. There is no additional noise pollution from our pod, and most of the kids arrive on foot or by bike. Um, and with all the kids in the district being in school only two hours a day, and play dates now being held only outside, the yards of people are generally busier. Uh, they're busier with laughter, they're busier with the shouts of glee and joy, they're busier with the dialogue of imaginary play. Um, and for many of us, in a time of such sadness, after the kids experience six months of intense loneliness and missing their peers, it's actually a pleasure to listen to. We hope you understand where we're coming from, why we did this, and we very much appreciate you taking the time to learn a little bit more about it.
How do we proceed from this point, Lisa? First of all, I'd like to say to the applicants, I'm sorry you're going through this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Um, so I would say that the next step would be for board members to ask questions, um, of the applicant and the applicant's team.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, also, um, I think this is a lousy thing to be doing. Um, I appreciate very much what you're doing. Uh, I actually had a discussion in June, uh, with several of the school board members, as well as our superintendent, about the creation of a pod and how looking to create an isolated group of children who would not be interacting with the general public um, and would ultimately be supervised and assisted by, I was looking at a teacher's assistant type position. Um, you know, still using the curriculum where they would be distance learning would be a great solution. Um, initially, that was pushed back from the school district, but then they recognized very quickly that it was a very positive thing to do. Um, you understand, um, and, uh, your counselor, Mr. Weingarten, uh, would understand, we are a quasi-judiciary board. We have an obligation to sit within the code. We have limitations on the things that we can do, um, and what we are able, uh, able to do. Um, you've asked for an interpretation, and I'd like to frame this a little bit more. I've read all of the documents that are there and done some research on uh, both New York State education law, um, as well as, uh, the building law. And, uh, I'm just going to go through a statement here to try to frame this, and perhaps, uh, then ultimately, Mr. Weingarten can respond to each of the things that are issues. So what I see is that the town's position is that a gathering of more than six children for educational purposes constitutes a school, but the Mamaronek zoning law is silent as to what constitutes a school. In a situation where the code is silent, then an interpretation would fall back upon established laws and code. New York State Building Department and the New York City Department, New York State Department of Education both have positions on this. Um, so I would have to ask, why should this board not rely on the established regulations of both of these two departments when there is silence in the existing code? Um, and precedent has shown that we look back, um, upon other established, uh, precedents in, in guiding us in making a decision. It appears that children are learning in a, in coordination with the school district, i.e. they're remote children, um, and that this is more of an annex to the school than necessarily a school. Um, if it's an annex, though, then it appears that it would need to conform to other standards, those standards that would be put on a school district. Um, if they were to place another school into a, uh, trailer or rent a space in an office, they would have to meet all of those requirements necessary to house those children in the school as an annex. Um, it appears right now that the building department, um, is currently compelled to be involved, specifically because there's a gathering of six or more children involved in the program. What is stated in the, uh, New York State Building Code specifically, which is in the letter to you from the building inspector says, "An educational group, E, occupancy includes, among others, the use of a building or structure or portion thereof by six or more persons at any time for educational purposes through the twelfth grade." That, to me, seems unambiguous. New York State Department of Education, um, in section one hundred point one zero, um, specifically says, "The parents provide home instruction to their children, may arrange to have their children instructed in a group situation for a particular subject, but not for a majority of the home instruction program." Where groups of parents organized to provide group instruction by a tutor for a majority of the instructional program, they are operating a non-public school and are no longer providing home instruction. Again, it's unambiguous. And I, I, I state these things not to come at you, but because I'm trying to frame, um, that those are the things that we have to address when looking at this. So when I look to the applicant's, um, a- application here, um, you've already stated that the role of the individual that they're supervising is acting as a basically a teacher's assistant that's there in an instructional role. Um, you also, in your, in the attorney's letter, they specifically go through, and the applicant states that the use of the garage is a SACC or a school-age child program. Um, but the use violates several of the SACC requirements. It cannot be part of a single-family residence, uh, as an example, and it cannot operate during the normal school hours. Um, I do note that, uh, counselor, you have referenced that there was something from the Office of Child and Family Services, OCFS, that waived these requirements under four-one-three-point-two-D. Um, but I didn't see any submission as part of yours that showed that, and I couldn't find any reference to the waiver. That would be extremely helpful, um, if we can have the documentation behind the waiver from OCFS. My reading, the, the, the thing that does concern me is that my reading indicates that in order to be an SACC, it must be registered with OCFS. And the applicant's seeking relief under the OCFS exemption, but the program's not registered as an SACC with OCFS. So why would these exemptions apply, or are you simply asking that the zoning board step in in place of the OCFS and use their logic as part of the interpretation? I don't know that that's not reaching, asking us to take on the role of another government agency, especially a state agency, um, in asking the zoning board to do that. I do have questions, though, for the town as well, um, because I would ask of the building inspector, you know, what makes a dwelling a private elementary school under two forty-dash-twenty-one-B-sub-one? Is it that simply having six or more students? And if there were five children, would the DOB even need to, uh, be involved here? Because I, I asked really the same question the counselor asked. I said, what if six children are at home and working with an instructor five days a week in the afternoon for their garage band? Um, does that become a school, and does that require a permit? The answer is maybe, I think. Um, if it is an SACC under OCFS, then would it not be a private elementary school in the eyes of Mamaronek zoning regard? Sorry, if it were seen as a, a private elementary school in the eyes of Mamaronek zoning, regardless, would it then require a special per, special use permit? If it required a special use permit, then shouldn't that application be before planning? And I think we need to get to the determination first of agency of record that would be addressing of this issue, because I'm not yet sure that this is a situation that should be before zoning, because you may ultimately need that special use permit. Does the use of the dwelling or garage and the manner that they are currently using it, regardless of it being a school, trigger it to be a habitable space? Uh, which I read under the code, it appears that the use of the space, because it is going to be air-conditioned and heated, um, has now turned it into a habitable space, and I do not believe that there's a CO in place that allows for that portion of the building uh, to do that. And does it meet all of the criteria for the building department as a habitable space? So even if this group, if this board were even to come up with an interpretation, would it be moot because you weren't able to actually have, uh, the individuals in that space, because it couldn't be habitable, because it never went through the proper process of DOB? So I, I've kind of reached a conclusion at this point, which is not a full conclusion, but one of the information that's provided at this point to say, how do I get around that the New York State Building Code specifies six or more children are a school, and New York State DOE website states that it, it disqualifies the parent from claiming they're a homeschool or any other type of school, and in fact specifies that they specifically are a non-public school. And I'm wondering, is the best route for the applicant to seek their relief from the town board as an emergency action to allow the specific use during the health emergency, but not seek a determination, um, from the zoning board at this point, because, uh, and the, uh, town council can correct me if I'm wrong, or the chair, uh, but is it not accurate that if the applicant were to adjourn to seek relief from the board, that during the time, during that time of this adjournment, um, the building inspector would not be in a position to seek any action against? the building inspector would not be in a position to seek any action against the applicant until such time as the board determines it should close the case? Because as a quasi-judicial body, I believe the case would be sitting before us, waiting on another body to report back. And that I don't think the building inspector would be in a position to take any action until this was ultimately determined by the town. But again, counsel, you can make that application if you thought that that was worthwhile.
May I respond?
I believe you're correct on that one, Jonathan. If they're in front of the zoning board, I believe I told, I told one of the council that we would not be able to pursue anything because they are in front of the board seeking relief.
Is it my turn to respond to the comments, or is there going to be more comments? I have one question, Jonathan. And I have a better question, I think, to the applicant. In the garage, is there another, what are the exits, personally, there?
I just, Arthur, before you go there, I just want to say, we're here at zoning, so we just got to watch that we're not getting into the building portion of this.
Someone just said that it's not a habitable space, and I don't know if that's correct.
But again, even with that, that's really going to be state code, not zoning code. So you're really looking at, at least as well as I can see, you're looking at the zoning section of this, not the state codes.
No, I was only suggesting, Arthur, that based on the submission that came in the comments that were provided by the neighbors, it was identified that this space is actually air-conditioned and heated, which may trigger that it is a habitable space, but that has never been applied for. And I was only saying that that's not the issue before us, but that this argument of what we're going through may be moot anyway, because the space in the end may not be habitable. That's all. I'm not making a determination. I'm not suggesting anything.
I just say, any space can probably become habitable with time and effort, so you can make a space habitable. Whether, you know, that was in one letter, I think, from somebody, so I don't think I ever heard that from the property owners, that it was heated and air-conditioned. Again, that would be something that, if, depending on what the board decided, I would discuss with the applicant when we cross that bridge about, you know, for life safety issues, light ventilation, things like that.
Right.
But that's going to be in the building side, not the zoning side.
I would also like to, just to the board, a group of letters in support of this did come in to the board and would request that Francine have those entered into the record unless anyone has an objection.
So I have a question, which relates to, I guess, reading through the material. I made an assumption that this is, would be a temporary, if such a permit were granted, it would have to be a temporary permit conditioned upon the resumption of full-time school, but it's not stated anywhere.
Irene, you're not, we're not issuing it. You wouldn't be issuing any kind of permit or any kind of thing.
Okay.
Saying whether this is an allowed use or not.
Okay.
Well, I think what we're being asked, and Mr. Weingarten, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the position of the building inspector is erroneous. And you're asking for a determination that it's erroneous.
Correct.
And again, I just, I made the statement, so if you could address those directly, that would be helpful.
I'd like to, so thank you. I appreciate your comments. The one thing I would certainly not agree with on your comments is that the code is not ambiguous. It is definitely ambiguous on this, and I don't think it's nearly as clear as you were suggesting that it is. Particularly the issue that you raised as to whether or not this is a school. And while I don't have in front of me the Department of Education, I have looked at those, the regulations in front of me. The one thing that is clear in all of those regulations is, in order to qualify for a school, you have to have your own curriculum. We have no curriculum. We are relying on the curriculum of the school that we are, that are, these kids are enrolled in, which is your own elementary school. And the bottom line is, what those regulations are trying to prevent are schools from taking place where people develop their own school, their own homeschooling, as you call it, and that they're in there without licensing and having their own teachers and no supervision, and it's improper education that's being afforded to the children. That is not the case here. We are absolutely following the curriculum of the elementary school. They're in school for the entire period that that's going on, and they are doing the homework and the assignments that come in through the school. I think it is very clear that we don't qualify under the definition of school, and that that is something, and if you need more legal analysis on that particular point, we'd be happy to supply it. But I think one of the things I'm very sure about, and so it's clear to everyone that's here, we're not suggesting there's a deficiency in your code. That was, I think, how it started out. All, what we're asking for is we are appealing the termination of the building inspector, suggesting that an error was made, that they are not appropriately or properly interpreting your code. You have the jurisdiction, once a decision is made by the building department or the code enforcement officer, to say whether that decision was proper or improper. And we have, I believe, presented you with two opportunities to suggest that this is improper, because this is something that should be permitted within your community. The first is, as we pointed out, we believe that this is a use that is incident to a single-family home and is permitted, just exactly like that garage band. It is permitted. You know it is. It has been forever, and nobody needs a permit to do Cub Scouts in their home, or book groups in their home, or anything else of that nature, which is exactly what this is. So the other point of this is, as you said, if you say that it was a misinterpretation, it's for the use, and the use is temporary. It is during the declared sense of state of emergency that we are doing this. So therefore, it would only apply for that period, and these parents will be, are desperately hoping that their children will be able to go back to school and go back to school with their friends and all of their friends and teachers and not be in their garage or their home. That is not what they want. They are asking during this period. With respect to the very important question, well, before I get there, we'll get it, I'll give you some more on the SAC and the waiver. The problem with the OCFS, while they have given us this waiver and say, "You don't have to go get licensing for this." They won't do anything in writing. It's a state agency. They're tough to deal with, and we're trying to get something in writing from them. All we have right now is that they've refused to enforce, when they've been asked to enforce, like you were. They're not enforcing. We filed with them, and they say you're exempt, but they don't give you anything in writing. But on the issue of the town board, when this occurred, I reached out to your village manager. I reached out to your building inspector. They're all wonderful people. I've known them for a long time. And I spoke with them, and I asked them about this, and it became very clear that the town was interested in enforcing this. If there is an opportunity for us to have a conversation with somebody in the government regarding the appropriate thing that should take place, which is the town board would come in and say that there are going to be suspensions. It's happening everywhere. So for example, people want to eat outside. They want to, you see parking lots being converted where people can eat outside so they can enjoy restaurants. How does that happen? You have parking requirements. You have zoning requirements. Has anyone come to you and said there's a zoning violation? Of course not. Your town is allowing it. I don't know particularly in the town of Marineric if you've suspended those regulations, but by law, they're not permitted to without town board. I don't know why you would require these people to do it, but there are exceptions being made throughout our entire region because of what's going on now. And frankly, it's fascinating to be that this one group of, you know, seven, when we know there are dozens that are taking place within your community, are being suggested here. So, you know, are getting a notice of violation with potential penalties. So, please let me finish, and I'm happy to try to answer your questions. From my perspective, this code, while we're happy to talk to the town board and have a conversation about legislation, that would be great. But if they're not going to do that, or they don't have the time to do it, or they're not willing to do it, I don't know the answer to that question. But if they're not, and it's before you, I think we have presented a case to show that there's absolutely an ability for you to interpret the code in this temporary emergency circumstance, that this is an incidental use of the home, which would allow you to overturn the violation notice and permit these people to go on with their lives until this COVID emergency is over. So I do, I think it is, it is on your shoulders. It is in the code, and you have this ability to do this. And yes, I think the equities are strongly in our favor. And I'm sorry, I don't agree with your legal interpretation of those particular issues, and I would urge this board to make the right and proper decision.
I'm...
Good question.
I'm not making a legal determination. I'm actually looking for the ammunition from you to show why this board should have jurisdiction over it. The examples that you cited were all actions actually taken by the town board and the village boards. Each time for parking, suspension of permits, the issue of allowing for structures that were temporary for people to have dining in. All of those were items that were taken up by the town board, never came before zoning, and were taken as emergency actions. I'm just suggesting to you, this may not be the right venue in order to do it, because I don't know how to get over this very single issue that we must rely upon established code and law when there is silence in the existing zoning law here. This is a limited board. There's only so much that we can ultimately do. And that I'm suggesting to you that in the interim, while you go through that process, nobody is going to look to shut down this school if you actually leave it before this board where it's adjourned, while you go to seek the relief in the proper venue.
We appreciate that, and we will, as I said, go to any meeting, meet with anyone, these are virtual meetings these days, at your town that wants to have that conversation. But there is no, there is no issue legally that you have the jurisdiction to make a determination as to whether or not the code enforcement officers' issuance of that violation notice was appropriate under the zoning code. It can't be argued. There is a code provision that says that's your job as a zoning board. And therefore, if we have appropriately given you information to show that this is a permitted incidental use, you are permitted to overturn that violation notice. That's just, that's just pure and simple law. You may disagree with me on my, on what my ultimate conclusions are with respect to what your zoning code means and what you're required to do. But I can tell you with certainty, if I went into a courtroom, this is not a school. I am certain that this is not a school under those New York, under those regulations, because of lack of curriculum. And it's not just enough that they have a tutor. It's because the school is taking place outside. It's not homeschooling. We're not responsible for it. We're supervising something. That is not a school, not under New York State law.
I'm not going to comment for the board. I'll only comment on my behalf, that I'm looking for more documentation so that this could be more compelling.
Anybody else want to comment?
I just wanted to say that I'm a town council member, so you do have somebody from the town board here. I'm just a liaison. I'm not a member of the zoning board or a voting member. So I just want to let you know that this is the first I am hearing of this as a town board member. And, and just to correct slightly with Jonathan, and both of you had alluded to, the town does not have outdoor dining. I think that's all in the village. And anything we've done regarding parking has been done by the town supervisor through the emergency order. The town board has not passed emergency laws.
We would be, again, very willing to meet with anyone at the town that would like to discuss this with us. So please, I have, my contact information is there. If you'd like it, I'd give it to you. And we would be, we would be grateful for your assistance in putting that together for us.
Yeah, and I just can't speak as to why this, the route that's being taken. I just don't have the information of why it's going this route versus a emergency order relief, but I can look into that.
But again, from our perspective, there was a violation notice issued, and we are required to either cure the violation, which would be suspending the learning pod, or ask for an interpretation. Those were, that was our legal route, so we've taken that route. But if there is a discussion to be had on a governmental basis as to potential legislation, we would be happy to have that conversation.
Well, I'm not trying to circumvent this route, and I think that the idea was probably to see this through and just see what plays out and what the options are. So I can't, I'm just not informed enough to tell you, but I will follow up with the town board.
Thank you.
I have a question, and I don't know whether it's Lisa. In the submission on page six, the applicant discusses, or the applicant's attorney discusses the emergency regulations that the state had set forth, particularly that would appear to kind of negate the town's argument, saying that, you know, on an emergency basis, things are exempted that would normally not be permitted. Does that play into our decision-making process? Or does it override the whole, I don't, I'd like some...
I had a little bit of experience with family daycare.
Yeah.
Well, that's kind of what a lot of that stuff on, from the OCFS is. And yeah, so you can't make zoning to prohibit family daycare.
Right.
Center in town.
Right. But it's talking about these emergency regulations that the state promulgated in August and then in September, saying that this, kind of, this is permitted.
How I read through that was that it seems like that is permitted if it's in connection with a family daycare. So you could have extra children that were of school age as opposed to the normal age children that you have in a family daycare.
Okay.
Yeah, it didn't, it, to me, it didn't work. I mean, if Mr. Weingartner can...
No, I, we are not, we are not suggesting that the governor's executive order exempts us from this zoning regulation. We did not make that argument. But we've clearly stated in our papers, and we use the examples as to why we do not qualify as a school and why we do not qualify as daycare. And, you know, again, the zoning, a zoning law is derogation of common law. It is strictly interpreted against the municipality, and we have to be strictly prohibited. And I would suggest that we are not strictly prohibited here. This is permitted, particularly under the circumstances. And your board has the authority to overrule the building inspector. And again, we are urging at least three of you to make that determination if we cannot get some traction with your, with your town board as far as adopting some legislation that would specifically exempt us.
The only issue I would have with that, Mr. Weingartner, is not, not, you know, I, trust me, I don't have a, I don't have a one way or the other in this. But what I would have to say is that the problem is, the board can't say it's just because of what's happening now. Once they make a determination that this is permitted, it's permitted.
You know? Well, that's where we would disagree, because again, because of the temporary nature of it. I think they do have a right. I think there are things that if they are, so for example, the reason if somebody's having a Boy Scout meeting, they're allowed to have it in their garage.
A Boy Scout doesn't happen on a daily basis.
But even, even, well firstly, it's not on a daily basis. It's during school days. So at most, it's five days a week and not vacations and not certain months. So it's not written in your code as to what makes something all the time, what makes something temporary, what makes something... The zoning board would have the right to interpret that. So my point here, my point here would be, we have a temporary situation. We hopefully have a vaccine on the way. We are, these parents are just desperately trying for permission to have an ability to keep their children safe for a period of time. This decision, if you overruled the building inspector on the basis that this temporary use during an emergency was an incidental use of a single-family home, that that was the language that was used, that would have precedent for nothing else going forward other than that, and you would need a state of emergency and a temporary use that was incident to the home. We believe that there is the ability to do that.
I mean, frankly, it's more than just the emergency order. If you restrict it to times when the school district is offered, you know, a remote option and not permitted kids to go to school every day. I mean, we're talking about very limited circumstances. I've seen this board put all kinds of conditions on...
Well, just...
I'm just saying that I can't, just following up on the, on how to narrow the circumstances if that's the way the board ended up wanting to go. There's a lot of ways to characterize this. But, I mean, it's a mistake not to focus on the fact that this is a, really a result of what the school district has done.
But the easiest narrowing, Carol, would have been to use the interpretations that are already on the books that say this has to be less than six children. It's unfortunate that this is a situation where there are seven children involved, because the building department is fairly explicit about having to find a number, which was six. And I'm still trying to find the authority for us to deal with this and consider this emergency situation and this temporary issue. We've never come across this. You know, the zoning board typically deals with things that are semi to permanent. that are semi to permanent. We're adding, allowing the add-on to a house. We're adding, you know, some things that, that is out.
How does this differ than they are coming to the board to say, six is allowed. I'm asking for relief to seven. I mean, how does that differ from a side yard variance? How does that differ from anything else?
Arthur, the, that, that number isn't in our code. That's used.
Determination. In, 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 in interpreting, I think, challenging the decision of the building inspector. Unfortunately, you're the building inspector in this case. Unfortunately, I say that, that they're coming to us for relief. And the relief in this instance is, is the determination that the building inspector made the right determination or not.
Then I would like.
Times and. Argue the case. I'm just trying to pinpoint, why are we here for?
I don't know if maybe you could say that might, because my interpretation came from the number that's in the state occupancies, the section of occupancy in the state code. That's where we get that number seven from.
That's the number seven then. And then that's a moot point.
Just to be, just to be clear, just to be clear, by the way, that number does not include the child, I believe, that lives in the home. So we're, no, no, no. But what I'm saying is that would be, we, we are one person over that limit. And if this board found that that was the issue that was troubling them, we would have to then have kids on schedule so that we had one less child there. If that's what's going to settle this from the perspective, if that's the best we can get, we would encourage you to let us know that and we would live with that restriction and comply with that restriction. We don't believe that that New York state number is necessarily impactful on what we're permitted to do. But if that was the finding of this board, we would be willing to comply with that, with that requirement.
What I'm looking for is the argument that would help us to not have to look at the state. What I'm saying is when the zoning regulations are silent on an issue, then we have to fall back upon existing code and regulation. Typically, the first place we look to is the New York state building code. We don't have the ability. This board doesn't have that ability to override that. We have to be in harmony with the code. Our town code can't be, we're not a city. A city could potentially do that because they have the ability to do it outside this state code. A town does not have the ability to override state code. We can be more, we can be more restrictive, but not less.
Your town code has school in it. Your school definition is what your town says. The, it is not what the state says it is. It's what your town zoning code says, a permitted use, particularly in this district, is a school. And you have the ability to say, what is the definition of that school? You can look outside to other law, but you don't have to. You as a town and you as the zoning board who has the right to interpret that code could say, what is a school? And the fact that we don't have a curriculum.
I'd have to defer to our council because again, I would need some kind of documentation from you, but I would defer to council on that issue.
Well, I, I, I think there's ambiguity about, about the school issue. That's, that's one issue. And to Carol's point earlier about, you know, talking about limiting the circumstances and conditions. I just want to clarify that the zoning board isn't being asked to grant a variance or any kind of permit. They're being asked to interpret that this is incidental and customary for any home that wants to do this. And as Jonathan pointed out, zoning determinations run with the land. They're not by nature temporary. When there are temporary restrictions or provisions in place, it's, it's not put in place by the zoning board. So I, I don't have an opinion on this either, but it is, it is a novel case for this board. And so it does require some, some thought and investigation about what kind of precedent it sets and what the best venue is to address it.
And I, I also had another question, which I was going to ask earlier, which is, I, I mean, I take your point that this is happening not only all over our area, but probably all over the county and all over the state. I mean, you read about people going into vacation homes in the Hamptons and I'm sure they have very restrictive zoning there too. I'm just, what, I, I mean, I'm sure you look, but do you think this issue has not come up anywhere?
Of course it has. It, it hasn't because nobody's issued violation notices.
Well, I called a few different building departments before I, you know, I didn't, we don't just go into something. I guess I'm like, what, how is anybody else handling this? Not, no, none of the building departments I called have received any complaints about this, so they haven't seen it. When I, when I contacted the state also, they, I asked, I said, has their technical, because I asked their technical board, you know, is there a way that this can work? What's, what can we do with this? They haven't seen it either. They were saying, the only thing that they said, you know, which I think that, again, Mr. Wangard, I told you, um, your colleagues, was that it would still just need a building permit, but as long as it meets your zoning.
Well, Mr. McCary, I, I, I have tremendous respect for you and the department. You know that and none of this is to be, is taken personally or anything else. But there, in all sorts of enforcement and all sorts of ways, there are, there is discretion on behalf of those who are issuing the enforcement. It's not as black blood of law as, as suggested. And I would suggest to you that the fact that no other building department has issued these violations when we know they're going on everywhere speaks volumes.
You're, you're making assumptions that the building, other building departments are aware of this.
Well, no, no, I, well, listen, I think everybody's aware that there are learning pods that are going on. I mean, I, I think, I know I am. I just so. And the long before. But it, it, it's all, it's, it's a matter of common knowledge. And the point is, it's a remarkable thing that somebody actually complained about this. I still can't understand what the problem that the neighbor has, other than, you know, I just, I don't want to get into that because I don't even know who it is. But the bottom line of this is, from our perspective is you have gray area to make an interpretation. You have an ability to help these people. Your town board has an ability to help these people. It ju, it just doesn't make any sense that they're going through this and we're looking for help on some level to, to allow these people to go on and do what's right for their kids.
Richie, do you, do you accept Mr. Wine Garden's argument? If we were to take even a strict interpretation of this group E issue, that the one person who is an occupant of the household would not be there. I mean, I.
Unfortunately.
Narrow or a broad, no, let me just finish the question. Narrow or a broad approach to this? Because if I were to take a very strict interpretation, I would say six people would include the tutor. But you know, I don't know if that was the purpose and I don't want to even get into that. But let me just ask the question directly. If you had observed that were only five children that were in that garage, learning in that pod, would we even be, would you have issued a violation?
I don't think so because there's another section of the state code that's, I have in front of me, five or fewer children in a dwelling unit. A facility such as above within a dwelling unit, having five or fewer children receiving such daycare classifieds shall be classified as an R three, which is just a regular residence. So it is, you know, it's state code, you know, you, you're triggering different things in state code too.
Can I ask, can I ask the obvious follow-up, which is if it was five children plus the child who lives in the home, would that have made a difference to you?
No, that's the, that's, you're, you're again with if, that's what the OCFS has something about not counting the child that's in the home.
Correct.
Different than, than all these codes live alone, which is, it drives me nuts. It'd be very nice if they all intermingled.
And I'm having a hard time staying away from the OCFS issue because there are a whole group of additional triggers under this SACC. And we haven't seen any documentation. I would love to hang my hat on what, exactly what you stated, that they've given you this verbal, but refusing to put in writing. If you had something in writing, I think this becomes a slam dunk to say, we would be able to rely on an interpretation that was made by a state governing body. And then we can make our own determination that the building inspector's decision was erroneous.
Well, we will press them.
More research that can be done in order to get something. I mean, even, even something in writing that said on August, whatever, they waived this requirement, you know, on a global basis. I, I, I know you mentioned it, but I didn't see any.
We can give you an affidavit from our client.
John.
We can try and get, we can try and get something from the state in writing, but we can certainly give you an affidavit from our client.
Mark and Jonathan, Amy DeVito did send us a link in chat. I just can't open it while I'm in chat. So if you go to your chat in the bottom, you'll be able to open it. He sent a link to OFCF.
Yeah, I, I, this is the document I actually shared with Lisa. It's the one that it states this, it reinforces this issue about the, the homeschooling, not being a homeschool, you know? I, I'm not sure it helped.
Can you explain how the assistant helps the children?
I, I, I have to ask my client to do that.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Casey?
So the, the way that the remote day is organized is that the more, so we all have children that are in the PM pod. The, the day is broken up into AM and PM pods. And the way that the, the remote day is organized is the morning is filled with what they're calling asynchronous work. So that it is filled with things like apps, you know, math apps, worksheets. Music, well, the music, yeah, music too, but more that's assignments. They're giving them assignments. They're supposed.
Through Zoom or is that assignments on?
So the, so the asynchronous is all things that technically, if the kids are being remote, are supposed to be overseen by the parents. So it's assignments like, here's a turkey, disguise the turkey and tell a story about what the turkey did to disguise himself and why it won't get caught on Thanksgiving day to be eaten for Thanksgiving dinner is a perfect example. We got it today. Those kinds, those kinds of things. And then they're also filled with technological applications. So there's something called Zern. There's something called Epic. The kids are supposed to log a certain amount of minutes every day on these applications. The teachers can check in after the school day is over to make sure the kids are keeping up with what they're supposed to do. Then the afternoon is organized from 12:35 to 3:00 PM with the teacher, with their actual Mamaronek School District teachers. They are on a live Zoom very much like we are on right now. And the teacher is walking them through lessons, both, you know, reading, math, writing. And then interacting with them. So they'll be on it like this. They'll be put into breakout rooms. They're supposed to discuss what they read with the other children in their pod and then they go back to the teacher. And then they hop off and they do a five minute worksheet and they get back on with the teacher and go through the math that they just did for five minutes. So the way that our tutor is helping the day progress is she's overseeing the work that is assigned to them that would otherwise be left up to us while we are working and taking care of our other children. And, and then she also is there while the kids are live zooming in order to help them just, you know, the teacher will say, get out your math spiral book and switch to lesson six. And she's there just to help them facilitate, you know, help make sure that the, that it's going smoothly in order for them to interact with their teacher as best as possible.
Extremely important element, Arthur, is, is the socialization work that goes on, you know? My kids were stuck at home during the beginning of this entire thing and it was unhealthy. I mean, you can't believe the change in attitude with them for their ability.
I understand that, but they're, they're dealing with kids that are in the second grade. Is that correct?
Yes.
So they're seven years old and your children, John, that are a little below than that.
Correct?
Yeah.
So what I'm trying to say is that, so, so that if the aide isn't teaching them, but organizing them to be, I'm trying to understand, is, is the aide teaching that will make her a school as opposed to someone who's just organizing her? Or organizing the kids that are being taught by the school? I'm trying to understand this.
It's a tricky question. We, I mean, mostly because we're just parents, but all of a sudden we've become full-time teachers as well, which anyone who has children and.
And there's no limitation.
Answer is that anything that is assigned to them, they're only seven. You hand them assignments and say, good luck. They need help. They need someone there helping them walk through each assignment and the process and what they're learning and what they're looking at and the phonics of the words that they're reading and the context of the sentences and the context of the math problems that they're working through. So it is the Mamaronek School District curriculum and assignments, but she is there to help facilitate them understanding what they're actually doing.
No different than really an aide would do in the classroom and helping a group of students that were there. And, and by the way, it's a normal thing that's happening on a day-to-day basis. You have kids who are appearing while some are remote and some are in class and some are supplemented where an aide is working or the teacher is working. Supplement that. That's why I'm really, I really view this as an annex to the school. They're not, they're not a private school. They are just another area that they are learning in. And maybe, Mr. Wine Garden, you can look at a document which was shared in the link, which is from the Office of Children and Family Services, ID number 20-02, because maybe you can make an argument around that maybe this is a drop-in program. And that it's not assigned seats and it's not assigned kids that are there. And these kids are opting in on a drop-in basis, which would give them an exemption. Maybe there's an argument there. But first you'd have to go through and actually go through an OCFS remote learning exemption form. That has to be submitted. It's an online application.
It, it has been submitted. It has been. They filled it out. They were asked to fill it out. They've gotten it. There's a supervisor that's willing to speak to a member of the board here or your council. We've given you the phone number in the chat. We are exempt. There is no licensing requirement. And, and, and so, so again, are they, this, are, are, do they have the outright right to do that? Maybe, maybe not. But they've made that decision in the context of the circumstances and that's what they're doing.
I don't think, I don't think we'd argue that right. I think we're actually looking for that guidance from a state agency.
Well, but again, they're just, this state agency has said, you don't need a license. We have filled out that form and they've told us we don't need a license. So that again.
Again, reading this document, if you can take, maybe just a screenshot would be acceptable for this board because it simply says the form should be entered in the system. It doesn't say an approval. It doesn't say you had to get some of creative action. Perhaps you can demonstrate to the board that you have done the OCS and that if, and, and by the way, not everything is exempt under that. The, the one that I'm reading that looks like it fits the best for the full exemption for what you're doing would be this drop-in.
Ms. Ms. DeVito, who's the person who is, has been dealing with OCFS is on this Zoom. She, I don't think she's been, she's been the one doing the chatting and certainly ask her questions if you want to make her active as a participant. She's one of our clients.
She sent the contact. She sent the link. Yeah, I'll, I'll email to everybody.
But again, she's on this evening. If you want to ask her questions, she's the one who's been dealing with them. And she just chatted. She's happy to answer questions if you have.
But the, my point again was that it has to meet one of these exemptions. So, you know, is it? And, and the best one that I said applies maybe is the drop-in because I, I don't know that it felt under the school-based program exemption. I don't know that it fits under the single purpose program. It's the combination of both of those issues. Having completed the form and having at least one of those conditions, which would then give you the exemption.
Again, if the state.
To us of which it is.
Let me ask you a question. If the state hasn't made the determination or given it, just said to you, you're fine. We don't, you don't need a license. How am I, I, we don't know what their determination was. We don't know. I mean, I can make an argument. I can make an argument probably for each one of them. But we're telling you, the state hasn't told us.
Make an argument under.
I think, I think, I think we have in our paper, but we'll supplement it.
Yeah. And in the meantime, with an adjournment, no one is taking action about shutting this down. So.
We, we, no, no, we appreciate that very much. And again, you know, with everything that's going on, we, we'd be happy to come have a meeting. Just tell us when, other than next Thursday, we are going to go have Thanksgiving. But we'd be happy to have a meeting with the supervisor, town board members, anybody. If, if there's another avenue, we're happy to explore it.
I think you can explore simultaneous paths.
That, that, we're happy to do that.
At this point, are there any other comments from the board? Because I got a feeling that the applicant and the applicant's attorney is going to have to come back with a lot of stuff and notice.
Right.
And I think you've got a group here. It's very sympathetic to the cause.
Wait, wait, please, we appreciate it. We're dealing with, again, it's very difficult as an attorney to be dealing with something of first impression because you don't have a lot of, you know, just, just doesn't happen. Like you said, where else is it happening? As far as we're concerned, as far as we know, it hasn't happened anywhere else. So you're asking us, typically we'd come into you with a request for your board and we. and we would be showing you law based on cases that have taken place over the years on a number of occasions. We don't have that here. So we're doing the best we can and we will try to answer specifically the questions that you posed today to see if we can do a little bit of a better, to make you more, job to make you more comfortable.
Right, and remember, we have just as much an obligation to the individual who filed the complaint as we do to the applicant.
Actually, my opinion is you don't have an obligation to either of us. You have an obligation to interpret the code properly in context of what it's supposed to mean and, and what the, what, what, what the town meant when it drafted it.
You're correct. Our obligation is to interpret the code just with both the applicant and the complainant in mind.
Correct.
Can you explain without giving names, how the complaint, from the complaint made to the building department, how the process went that we're here now?
From the complaint?
Not, not, Richard, Richard got, Richard got the.
Our code enforcement officer received the complaint. Actually, I don't know if it was the same person, you see numerous complaints, but it could have been the same person calling over and over. And he followed, you know, he followed up with that. That's basically how it happens, you know, then before, you know, we do as much research as we can. You know, we do have other things that we're doing, so we, we contact the state. We can, like we said, I called other towns just to see, has anybody else, you know, run into this? How have they handled it? And unfortunately for me, nobody else got complaints about it. So none.
With the knowledge that, that, that these pods are being, are being created in their communities.
I mean, you can say that we have the knowledge of people finishing basements without permits. We have the knowledge of, you know, all sorts of things, but we can't prove it unless we know where it is. Somebody makes a complaint, we're not, you know, this isn't something that, you know, you can really find unless you're really searching for it. So it's not something we're, you know, driving around town looking for. This was, you know, it's a complaint based violation. And that's how it came to, you know, that's how it comes to us, through a complaint.
Okay. So I don't know if we can go any further tonight. At this juncture. So we anticipating that you'll put a sign up and be noticed? I mean.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Francine, when is the next meeting?
December 23rd, 23rd.
December 23rd?
Yeah.
That's a bad day.
Are you really going to show it?
Can we push it over to the new year? That's going to be a funny time.
It's the board's call, not mine.
Excuse me?
I, I can't check, you gotta tell me when, when to ask if there's a room.
When is there room?
Don't know, that's fine, that's tomorrow.
Okay.
When would you like the meeting so I have an idea?
After the first of the year? Not that we're going away, way anywhere, but it's a different times. And not during the, not during the school break?
Maybe the, maybe the sixth of January, you want me to check?
Sure.
Soon as you let us know, we'll get the sign posted, created.
Time just has to be 14 days prior, so.
Right, okay, so you'll let us know what the date is.
Yeah, we'll definitely let you know before then.
We'd just like to say on behalf of all of the pod parents who we're getting texts from and seeing the chat and ourselves, we very much appreciate your time and all of your empathy. We hope to resolve it all as quickly as possible and we hope to be back in school as quickly as possible.
We all wish that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So can we terminate this discussion at this point?
Do we have to open it up if we've never opened this up to public comment or?
Or how do we do?
Arthur, that's at your discretion because this isn't a public hearing. You don't have to, but if you want Richie to ask if there's anyone attendees or if he's received any email.
I have no way of knowing that from just looking at the screen.
Well, you can, you can ask, I guess there's a raise your hand function.
There is a raise your hand function. I have no emails, I can tell you that much. So if anybody of the, any attendees would like to speak, if you would raise your hand, I can turn on your microphone.
She sees, you see everybody, just, just not what's on the screen?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
You do too, Arthur, if you look at the attendees versus the panelists.
Yeah, you just got to click on.
Twenty-five participants.
Don't confuse him.
Yes.
Very confusing, you have problems with us on the screen.
Okay, we're not getting anybody raising their hands again. I've checked emails, I'm not getting emails from either email sec, either of my emails.
And I. From our client, from our clients, who I think are most of them, we're, we're very willing to wait to the next meeting.
And for anyone who's watching on TV, emails can be sent in between now and the January, whenever the next meeting is. And the board will receive copies and review them.
I will likely have a town board meeting on the sixth, so I will not be attending.
Abby, will there be a town boarding, town board meeting between now and January 6th?
Oh, yes. We've got, we are meeting, well, we have a budget meeting tomorrow. We have a town board meeting December 2nd and, and then we have a town board meeting December 16th.
So you'll be able.
Also have two work sessions. So there'll be four town board meetings in December, two work sessions and two public sessions.
Okay. So you'll, you'll follow up a lot of now.
Yeah, I'll bring it up with the town board.
Can I speak on scheduling? I'm recused here, but I just want to speak on scheduling. It seems like this is an issue of importance beyond this case itself. And I think it's important for Abby to be here. So if she can't make it, because it's a town board meeting, perhaps we should meet the following week.
I wasn't sure, Francine, what do you mean you have to check about a room? Because we're all on Zoom.
Well, I have to check if, well, not, not a room, but I have to check if I can get Zoom because it, there's one thing. I, I said room because I'm so used to saying that.
Okay.
See if there, we have the ability to have a Zoom meeting.
I mean, I would.
Right, we have.
Planning board, so it would not work.
And we have to check with LMC TV.
That's what I meant, LMC TV.
Why don't we let them?
Okay, I, I, okay, I got it.
Want to make the determination at, after the new year, what, what days available?
Abby, it's like, you know, motive. You're just used to saying one thing and that's what I was used to saying, room. I meant check with LMC TV for Zoom. But 13th is planning board, so it wouldn't work.
But it doesn't, it doesn't need to be a Wednesday.
No, no, it can be a set, it could be a.
It might be Monday, the 11th then?
That's fine. Richard, are there any cases coming up in the next meeting?
What do you do?
A lot?
Two or three.
And, and there could be more coming in between now and then.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll see if I can get my, everybody possibly available for Monday, the 11th?
Yes.
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 Okay, I'll try to that date.
I have to check, I have to check. I think it should be fine, but just give me, just give it tomorrow to check.
If there were no other comments, can I make a motion to move to an executive session for?
Jonathan, there are very narrow explicit permissible reasons for an executive session.
It's, it's a discussion with counsel regarding liability.
That's not a permissible exception. You and I can discuss that in absence of a quorum, but that is not a permissible reason to go into executive session.
Okay.
So we'll go, in the next meeting will be about six weeks away, is that what? About six weeks away? I'm thinking about the other three applications that came in. Not so much this application.
Go on, try for the week before in December, the 16th.
That would be fine. Do you think, Mr. Weingarten, you can get the answers to at least some of the questions?
It's possible, a little more time would be helpful. So my only suggestion, if the sixth is the issue of the first week of January because of the conflict with the town board meeting, maybe there's another day that week that would work, which would give us the adequate time and the holidays.
So can you ask for adjournment to the next, the meeting after?
Is that? Well, that would be, that would be, that would be up to you.
Since. Why can't we do that? I mean, because we have three cases coming up that are already submitted. I don't know what those cases are, but they might like to get started if, if they get a positive determination from the zoning board. And, and the questions, yeah, that you have to, and some might be a little more complicated and you might need more time.
Well, that would be appreciated.
At least understand what I'm saying?
So in other words, the applicant can adjourn for the next meeting and, and appear at the, at the one after that.
That's right, give them enough time. It doesn't stop the use that, of the kids being in, in the garage, I assume. And we can then deal with the cases that we have in front of us, but I'm pushing them off for almost two months, which I think is unfair.
Then are you going back to the sixth for the meeting?
Whenever the meetings that Francine can get set up, but prior to the second, the meeting after that. If it's earlier, it'll be fine too.
January, the second, the January scheduled meeting is the 27th of January.
Well, why don't you push, Mr. Weingarten, push off to the 27th of January and we'll have a meeting sometime in the, I guess maybe the 16th, you said, of December? That's a month away.
That, that seems to be, and I, I'm okay, I'm not sure, Abby, is that, no, you're meeting, you're meeting, but that's the regular.
But that would be good because if he's not going to be, the 16th I would miss, but the 27th I would be there because that's, because we should be meeting the 6th and the 20th.
So why don't we proceed with that for your case?
That's acceptable to us, Mr. Chairman.
I would ask the chair, would there be a value in asking the Rose of Blooms to give access to the building inspector? So that at least he.
I was actually going to contact them tomorrow about.
That's his joy, it's his choice.
I was going to get in contact tomorrow about. Talk, I'll talk to them tomorrow about that.
It'd be, be helpful to be able to understand the physical conditions.
We, we, we will cooperate with that request.
Thank you.
And, oh, sorry, just to share with the, with the applicants that when the board convenes on December 16th, they may choose to discuss this issue among themselves at an open meeting and you're free to, you know, watch and participate. But it won't be a public, you know, we're going to delay the opening, the public hearing until January, but that doesn't preclude the board from discussing it.
Understood, appreciate it.
At this point, can I say goodnight?
Okay. Good night all.
Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody, if you can.
You too, thank you.
Bye.
Good night. Bye.
Good night, everybody.
That's all we get.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Just reading the comment.
Leave, yes, goodbye.
You can leave, bye.
Reading through the chats?
What's that?
Were you reading through the chats?
Yeah, I just wanted to catch up. Okay, have a safe drive.
Good night. Good night.
Bye.